Mr. Canty, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Pursuant to modifications made to the open meeting law by the legislature of the Commonwealth, this meeting is going to take place in a hybrid format. Members of the Select Board will be joining us here at the Great Hall at Town Hall. Members of the Board may be joining us virtually over the Zoom webinar platform. Members of the public who wish to attend this meeting may do so at the Great Hall here at Town Hall or over the Zoom webinar platform, or they may observe the meeting on Comcast Channel 9 or Verizon Channel 47. The Zoom webinar link is on the posted agenda that is on the Town website. Mr. Chairman, I would now, unless there's other business, read the executive session language.
Please.
The Select Board will hold an executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Clause 6, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property if the Chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. This would be in relation to the town wharf winches. I would make a motion that we enter into executive session to return to open session at approximately 6:00 PM.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Mr. Canty, second by Mr. Blitzer. Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Mr. Blitzer?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
And myself, yes. The Board will be returning at approximately 6:00 PM.
Did everybody get?
All, please join the Board with a pledge to the flag.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have some licenses and four administrative notes.
Mr. Chairman, pursuant just to this notification, pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting of the Select Board after notifying the Chair, subject to reasonable requirements of the Chair, so as to not interfere with the conduct of the meeting. At the beginning of the meeting, the Chair shall inform other attendees of any recordings. The meeting is presently being recorded audio and visually by PAC TV. We are unaware of any other recordings being made at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Canty. We have some licenses and, excuse me, I just said it right, four administrative notes. Pleasure for the Board.
Unless my colleagues have questions, I would make a motion to approve the licenses and the four administrative notes as one group. Mr. Chairman? Could I divide Administrative Note Number One out as I was not yet on the Board?
Okay.
I would modify my motion to exclude Administrative Note One.
Second. Motion by Mr. Canty, second by Mr. Mahoney, Administrative Notes Two, Three, and Four, and licenses. Discussion? Mr. Blitzer?
I vote yes.
Mr. Canty?
I vote yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
And Mr. Golden abstained?
Wait, was this one or the rest of them?
The rest of them.
I'll vote yes on the rest.
Yes, okay. Unanimous, thank you. Now Administrative Note One.
Make a motion that we approve Administrative Note One.
Second for discussion.
Motion by Mr. Canty, second by Mr. Blitzer. Discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I see it's a Province Town Brewery that's requesting this, and I would just like to suggest-
No, it's not. It's, I'm sorry not to correct you, but this is an administrative note, Charlie. It's the meet minutes for May 14, 2024.
Okay.
Because Mr. Golden wasn't here, Charlie. That's why we're taking it separate.
So these are the minutes. That's what happens when you're walking late. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Charlie.
Forget I said that.
That's all right. I'm here to help you. All right, any more discussion? Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Blitzer?
Yes.
Mr. Golden?
Abstained.
Abstained, and myself, yes. Four and one abstention, thank you. General Obligation Bond, Ms. Barrett, I believe, and Ms. Mechen. Welcome, ladies.
Good evening. Lynn Barrett, Director of Finance, and Patty Mechen, our Treasurer Collector, is here to present some information about our most recent bond anticipation note and our general obligation bond that we just did. So for reasons, because the Select Board authorized the Treasurer to borrow for the Town, but we have to come back to you to get approval for everything that we do, and you have to sign a whole bunch of paperwork that was given to you, and you have to take an official vote, which we have placed in front of you. You're not going to have to read it. We'll sort of go over it here tonight, but we'll have you vote, you know, as written in the vote that we gave you. So let's see, we're just going to start with, so we did two issues. One is a general obligation bond for $33,955,000. The Town received 11 bids. The net interest cost on this bond is 3.7278%. Coupon rates for this bond are between 5% and 4%. We received a premium of over $2.2 million. That premium is used to reduce what we're going to borrow plus pay underwriter and bond issuance costs. There's various maturity dates. It basically goes out 30 years, depending on the different projects. Some are five, some are 10, 15, 20, 25, or 30. The Town received a, they confirmed S&amp;P Standard and Poor's confirmed our financial rating at a AA+ when we met with them, and they reviewed our financials and everything. We're doing a bond anticipation note, which is 7.7 million. We got four bids, net interest cost 3.6285, coupon rate of 4.25. The premium received was $39,357,06. That premium is used to pay debt service cost on that bond anticipation note next year. So we'll use that when we go to pay the note that's due April of 2025. Again, we've received, confirmed our rating of a AA+. Plus, they also assigned an SP-1+ rating to the short-term note, and that's the highest rating that you can get on a short-term note. So we were pleased with that. The general obligation bond, so that $33,955, is made up of all of these projects, beach nourishment, dredging, the town boat ramp reconstruction, our two fire stations, West Plymouth and Manomet, some design work for traffic signal improvements at Court and Cherry Street, Plimpton Road sidewalks, road and bridge improvements for $5 million, some sewer borrowing for a collection system, and the gravity sewer interceptor relocation that we did down at Cordage. That was a project from a while ago. Manomet Zone pipe upgrades, water infrastructure improvements. So total projects were 35. almost nine million, and then the premium that was used to reduce the issue was 1.8 of that 2.2 million premium, so for a bond of 33.955.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Lynn, the prior slide. So everything is basically in today's world, and we're going back in time. The top one, beach nourishment from '96, what's the significance of that?
So that's a project that's been on the books for some time. It's sort of an ongoing beach nourishment project that the Department of Energy and Environment periodically uses the authorization on that to do beach nourishment. Last year, I think it was last year's project, basically, that is in that million dollars.
Okay, got it. Oh, I'm sorry. You know what? I'll save this one for when you're done.
The general obligation bond anticipation note, so this is a short-term note that we take out because we're either not going to long-term borrow or we're not ready to long-term borrow. So the projects that are included in the short-term note is an amount that we need on Stevens Field project for 1.8, $73,000 for some engineering work for Jenny Pond dredging, and then the three school roof projects. Right now, we're in, that project basically has been going on almost three years. We're not really sure yet what our final Town share is on that project because Massachusetts School Building Authority is reimbursing us for about half of the cost on that project, so we're rolling our short-term notes over again. And next year, hopefully, we'll know exactly what our Town share as we can long-term borrow at that point. Next here, so this slide I just wanted to put together because I know everyone knows, you know, with their own mortgage rates and people trying to get mortgages, and there's really no more refinancing because rates have gone up so much. I just wanted to sort of give you a historical look at the interest rates that we have gotten on either our short-term notes, which is over on the left-hand side. So basically, every year, we've either done a ban or every few years, we've done a bond, every couple of years to three years. So it's been almost three years since we did a bond. We were a little nervous about interest rates, but we actually did really well based on when we went out to market, we got 11 bids on our bond. When you look at the interest rate of 3.7 net interest cost for this one, and if you look back to like, say, 2017, we got 3.1. 2014, it was 3.1. In the two years where the interest rates was fairly low, which was 2013, 2.5, and then again in 2021, it was 1.4%, we actually refunded at those two times previous year's bonds. So in 2013, we refunded bonds from 2009 that had a higher interest rate, so we were able to save the Town some money. And then in 2021, we refunded notes from 2011 that saved the Town probably over $8 million when we did that.
Mr. Canty?
So Lynn, just for the edification of folks at home that may not understand what the different columns mean, can you just explain like the coupon rate and the net interest cost and what those mean over, because obviously the net interest cost is fluctuating throughout the chart?
Yeah, so the first column, obviously, is the year that we did the ban and the same year that we either did the bond over on the right-hand side. The coupon rate for either a short-term note or a long-term note is the rate that an investor is going to earn on those bonds when they invest, you know, for municipal bond. That's a coupon rate. But when we go out to market to sell and to receive bids, the underwriters will give us a premium. So in this particular case, we got a premium of over $2.2 million. So in using that premium against that coupon rate, it nets the interest cost of the cost of that note. So that's what the net interest cost represents. So it gets reduced because of the premium that we receive when the bidder bids on those bonds. So we receive money back, and then we use that money to reduce the amount that we're going to borrow, or on a short-term note, we use it to pay the interest that we're charged. Because we're actually charged that coupon rate in our budget, so the coupon rate is also what we pay in the budget.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. So at the same time, we get, so Patty and I, Lee, the Director of Assessing, and Don, so we sat with Standard and Poor's. It was a phone call rating. We sit with them for probably about an hour or so. They email us a whole bunch of questions prior to us sitting with them, and we go over all the Town's finances, we go over economic growth, tax-based questions, and that kind of thing. So Standard and Poor's then comes out with a rating after that, and that rating is a AA+, which is a stable, strong outlook. And the reasons for that rating were steadily growing property tax base, a history of positive operating results over several fiscal years, strong management with good financial management policies, a robust 10-year capital plan. So we were able to introduce to them this year the 10-year plan that we've been doing the last couple of years here in the Town. So they looked at that very positively. We have, we post regular budget expenditure and revenue reports on our website, so they like the fact that we, you know, continually monitor the budget and are transparent and give that information out to the public. So you can find all of that information on our website. They like the idea we have formal investment and debt management policies. We have manageable debt, which means that we have that, we budget for between a 6% and 8% out of our budget every year for debt service. So that's a good ratio according to the financial markets and Standard and Poor's, and also that we have rapid payout of our debt. So a lot of our debt is sort of, you know, paid off fairly quickly because we do level principal, so the debt sort of falls off. Like if you look at a graph, you know, it falls off instead of going straight across like a mortgage, same amount of a year. So they look at that very positively. They like the fact that we have strong reserves, our general stabilization fund, the nuclear stabilization fund, the pavement management stabilization fund, our facility management stabilization fund. So they look at all of those positively. And then they have an expectation that finances and budgetary flexibility will likely remain strong here in Plumpton.
Mr. Mahoney?
So Lynn, this is my, this is my question that I held off on, and you probably see it coming, but what are the communities that have AAA bond ratings? What are the bullet points that they have that we're missing?
So a lot of the-
And is it strictly a demographic thing still?
A lot of it has to do with demographics with Triple As. So you'll find higher income levels for people that live in those AAA communities. So they, that's all part of the rating, is the demographics, all of the financials and that kind of thing. So these are really good financials, but we have, you know, maybe not as high demographic income levels and that kind of thing. The other thing they do look at is our liabilities, which is our pension liability, our OPEB liability. So, you know, as you know, we do have a significant OPEB liability, which, you know-
Just sorry, significant reduction?
Yes, yep, yep. So they look at that as a, sort of like as a concern, as a credit weakness sometimes, but they also look at what we're doing to address that, and that's like a positive, you know, so they weigh these things out. But because of that, because of those things, we would, for our rating to increase in the report, because you all got a copy of it, it does say that if we were to significantly decrease those liabilities, then our rating could quite possibly be increased.
OPEB and what else?
And pension.
And pension?
Yep.
And the pension is currently on pace to be paid off in '34 or '35?
Twenty, thirty-five.
Thirty-five.
The unfunded liability.
The unfunded liability part, which is about 80 to 85% of the budgetary line item.
Yeah, it's a, it's a big number, yes.
Right.
Yeah. And the plan at that time in our financial policies is to start to use that difference when it gets reduced to address OPEB. But that's not until 2036.
So looking at some of those, and I don't know if you have this information, so looking at some of those AAA communities, and if we had two, I think we could all name 20 to 25 of them right now, but do you know of one or multiple communities AAA bond ratings that have really already put aside tens of millions, if not hundreds of millions of dollars to tackle OPEB? Are they dramatically ahead of us on-
Like a Wellesley, a Wellesley's a AAA. They actually did, they did like a debt exclusion kind of thing to fund their OPEB liability over like a 10-year period.
And just ended?
Yeah.
They just took care of it over 10 years and just floated it?
Yeah.
We're going to put this to bed.
Yeah.
Well, that's Wellesley, okay. So I just, I think that this whole demographic thing is kind of discriminatory. I think it should be based on the actions or the performance of the community on the ground. I think that encapsulate, encapsulates, you're not going to see that list in Brockton, if you will, okay? I'll say no more.
Okay. So then, before you tonight, we gave you a four-page document, so we need a vote of the Select Board, basically to approve the general obligation bond and note. Basically, what you're doing is you're authorizing the Treasurer on your behalf to do the borrowing, you know, sign a lot of forms also you have to sign. You're approving all the amounts and the interest rates that we sort of just reviewed. You're approving the dates of maturity. You're also approving the fact that the amount of the school roof notes reflect basically an anticipated Town share and not the State's share, because Bond Council doesn't want us to borrow for the State share, you know? So the way the program works is they reimburse us based on our costs, so they don't want us to borrow for any, anybody else. And that's, so we're saying, yes, that it's only our Town share that we're borrowing. In that vote, you're also approving our final official statement, which is this POS. It's a document that just goes over a whole bunch of financials. This will be posted on our website, so we didn't actually give you copies of this. It's a big document, but we do post this on our website every time we go out and do a bond issue. So you'll find it on the Financial Report Center of the Finance Department under debt. You're approving that this bond is subject to redemption at the option of the Town, so there are provisions that we can, you know, redeem in the future. We've done that in a couple of other instances. We're also stating that it's in compliance with SEC and IRS, so we have to do a whole bunch of stuff with regards to that. And then Select Board, Treasurer, and Town Clerk are authorized to sign all the documents related to the bond and the ban. So that's basically what that, that vote is, that we're going to ask you to take as written that we gave you tonight. And then that's it. If you have any questions for Patty or I, this is Patty's first bond issue that we've done, so we've gone through this together. And I think, you know, she did a great job, and I think you should be pleased with the results that happened.
Any questions, comments from the Board? I would like to thank you all, both of you, for your hard work and good work.
Thank you.
Along with the administration for all you've put through the last couple sessions.
Thank you. Thank you. We appreciate it. So you've got a lot of paperwork to sign, and we really appreciate that because Patty will get that back to Bond Council tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Canty, would you like to make the motion?
Yes, I'd make the motion that we approve the general obligation bond anticipation note as described in the presentation we received, as well as the four-page approximately document that we have in front of us.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Canty, second by Mr. Blitzer. Discussion? Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Mr. Blitzer?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
And myself, yes, unanimous. The two motions are one. Lynn, are you all done presenting?
Yes.
All right, so you need two motions, correct? Or just?
No, just that-
Just the one?
I have one question and two to hear.
Okay, that's what we were wondering. Okay, thank you. White Horse Beach Area Status Update, Mr. Gould, welcome.
For the record, David Gould, Director of Energy and Environment. I want to take the opportunity this evening to update the Board on some piping plover nesting that we have going on at White Horse Beach. In this slide here, I give you an overview of what's actually happening out in the field. I think most folks know this is Bartlett. We have a nest at this pin right here within approximately 30 feet of the location of the nest that we had last year, the first piping plover nest that we've had on White Horse Beach. This second pin right here is across from the main pedestrian access at Hilltop, and we now have a nest at this location, about two-thirds of the way down in front of the public dooming area. So this first nest, what we will refer to here, has hatched out. It is now what we refer to as a brood. There are four chicks. Those chicks are with the adults moving up and down the beach feeding. To give you some context, they will be approximately 25 days old on July 4th, so they're well on their way towards being able to fledge. The other additional nest is this nest. It was found with three eggs. Typically, what we can do is predict a hatch date when four eggs are put down. It's usually a 27-day incubation period, and we can predict a hatch date. This nest was complete, what we call a complete clutch at three, so I cannot predict a hatch date, which makes things a little bit more challenging. But needless to say, there is an active white, there is an active piping plover nest at this location, which presents some inherent challenges when it comes to state and federal regulations, and I'm going to go through that so the Board can understand that. So these federal guidelines for managing fireworks in the vicinity of piping plovers were implemented in 1997, and what they do is they provide guidance to avoid adverse effects on piping plovers. And essentially, what it is, United States Fish and Wildlife Service guidance to entities to avoid take under the Endangered Species Act. And take is a rather broad term. It doesn't just necessarily mean maim, harm, or kill. It can be just negatively impacting the normal behavior. And so they refer to two things, direct impacts and indirect impacts. Direct being injury, separation of adult from juveniles, or abandonment of a nest and allowing them to be exposed to the elements. And then indirect impacts, things like crowds walking through habitat or throwing objects, and they refer to objects as fireworks adjacent to either foraging habitat or nesting habitat, or unrestricted vehicular traffic. So those are the things that we're, we're looking at when we look at these federal guidelines. So they have some recommended measures, and these include launch areas. Launch areas for fireworks are recommended be three-quarters of a mile from any nest and/or foraging area. So I think where you just saw that map, you can already see where we're heading with some of these challenges we have from a geographic distance. So it speaks to access routes for vehicles and also speaks to vehicles on the beach, including emergency situations for law enforcement, which would be the only times that law enforcement vehicles would be allowed to drive through the habitat area. So on this slide here, there's two concentric rings, and those are measurements for the two nest locations, three-quarters of a mile concentric ring. So on that first one was the location of the nest, which is here, and a three-quarter of a mile radius where the federal guidelines suggest fireworks do not take place. It also is from where they're foraging. This pair, this brood migrates all the way down to the end of the full sail area, down towards Priscilla Beach, but in order to not create a map with numerous concentric rings and adding confusion, we just did it from the original nest location, and I think you can see the impact. Same with nest number two here, and it's a concentric ring of three-quarters of a mile where the guidelines recommend no fireworks. Couple of other important metrics just to remind the Board. We have monitoring going on out there for the two, the two broods. We have symbolic fence and signage and boat ramp restrictions at the full sail. Those are all in place. So what we're doing is a community exhibiting compliance with all the regulations and guidelines on the state and federal level. And we do that so then in case anything does happen, we're complying with the regulations that we need to. As a reminder, vehicle restrictions for unfledged plover chicks, the first week is 200 meters. It then goes down after the first week to 100 meters. So that's after hatching. So, that's after hatching, and those, those restrictions move depending upon where the, where the broods are, are moving. Again, 27 days for an incubation period for when the chicks will hatch out, and 30 days for fledge. So, when the chicks are hatched, it's 35 days until they're considered fledge, which means they can get out of the way of dangers, including vehicles. So, this is townwide compliance with what we refer to as MISA, which is the Massachusetts Endangered Species Act, the ESA, which is the Federal Endangered Species Act, and a plan, what's called the HCP, or the Habitat Conservation Plan. The Habitat Conservation Plan is something, is a permit that's issued from the United States Fish and Wildlife Service to the Commonwealth, and then municipalities can take advantage of that by getting what's called a Certificate of Inclusion. So, Plymouth is included in that. We were the first municipality to take advantage of that. And essentially, what it allows communities to do is to do additional monitoring, place additional signage, have additional staffing, and do a series of additional measurements to allow more flexibility than would normally be found under the guidelines. So, for example, right now, there are, there is a, there's, vehicles are allowed to travel during the daytime all the way upright away. If we weren't implementing the HCP, vehicles would not be able to go past the first cottage at Long Beach. So, what that does is allow during the daytime hours residents to get out to the day parking area, park along the roadway, and enjoy the beach. If we weren't in the HCP, they would be restricted to the very first cottage, and you wouldn't be able to go any further. That being said, we have to do certain things to comply with the HCP, and one of those is that we sign an agreement that will enforce the federal, same federal guidelines on all beaches within Plymouth, and that includes White Horse Beach. So, if we don't comply, not only could we have some, some enforcement action against the community for White Horse Beach, it could also impact our management plan on Long Beach because we have a Habitat Conservation Plan that, that applies townwide. So, we have the regulations and the guidelines on the state and federal level, but we also have a Habitat Conservation Plan that we need to abide by. With that, I will open it up for any questions in regards to what I just went over.
Mr. Canty?
Thank you, David. It was very detailed. I appreciate that. But, I know that, I mean, last year, there was the one nest down there, and it, it couldn't have been more strategically deployed to create an interference if it had been tactically dropped by special forces. It was, it was just very centrally located on that beach to maximize its terrain denial. Now, there's ones there again and one farther on the beach, so it seems like the trend is this is going to be a recurring thing. Do you, do we, at this point, do you agree with that, that this is going to be, we can expect this to be a almost annual occurrence based on this trend?
Yes. We've always wondered why there hasn't been activity on White Horse Beach?
Yeah.
That has the habitat that you would suspect to find plovers?
Right.
And what we speculate is that as the population has grown?
Mm-hmm.
And for example, when I started on Long Beach in 2001, we had 13 pairs?
Right.
Of plovers on Long Beach. We now have 52.
Okay.
So, as that population has expanded, not just in Plymouth, but along the South Shore, they're filling in niches in habitat that they previously didn't go to, now including White Horse with the first pair last year and two this year.
So, with their population increasing here and presumably elsewhere, is there any end in sight to these types of restrictions? Are they on the, are they in the near or medium term going to have a population sizable enough not to be subject to an Endangered Species Act, state or federal?
So, statewide, we have approximately 700 pairs of piping plovers in the Commonwealth, which is a fantastic number. On the federal level, which is what we're really dealing with, federal rules and regulations here, the Fish and Wildlife Service, the Federal Fish and Wildlife Service, looks at the Atlantic Coast population, so they look at it from Maine to Florida.
Sure.
And that entire coastal population. So, while Massachusetts may be doing really well?
Yeah.
They look at it as the entire coastal population, what that's doing. And so, you have states like Massachusetts that are doing really well, and others that are not doing well at all?
Sure.
And they sort of balance themselves out. So, on a Atlantic Coast population, it still has not met the requirements that the Fish and Wildlife Service wants to see for any sort of restrictions to, to be lessened.
I know last year, when we talked about this, you know, obviously it being on White Horse Beach right around July 3rd and 4th, which is a big occurrence for our Manomet folks and many folks in the area. It was explained that if we, and you, you did talk about it a bit in your presentation about if we comply with it, we can still do certain things. If we don't comply with it, things will get really bad really quickly for a long time. So, can you, just, just to reiterate and focus on that, if we, we have to comply with this, or else we will face consequences, state and federal, of significantly more onerous restrictions on the activities residents can do and visitors can do. Is that, is that an accurate summation of one of the reasons, in addition to wanting to preserve the birds, but also to preserve what level of access we have is a reason to comply with these restrictions?
That, that's a very accurate statement. So, the example, again, we often use is Long Beach. So, there are communities that have coastal beaches with shorebirds nesting on them, and they get their permits in place, and those permits are issued, and they manage accordingly. What's happened over the years at Long Beach was that our appeals got, our permits got appealed, then opening them up for further review. So, rather than just the local conservation commission reviewing it, now DEP is looking at it, and we had additional restrictions when that happened years ago, including the restriction about driving around.
Mm-hmm.
So, if that hadn't been appealed, DEP wouldn't have had that sort of bite at the apple to impose additional restrictions. And then, we had other appeals that then brought in coastal zone management and U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and the court system, and we got more and more restrictions. And so, one of the things we want to do is comply here so we don't have violations, and we don't get into more issues regulatory, because those inevitably result in further scrutiny, which typically means more requirements and further restrictions.
So, the more, basically, the more local residents have resisted it over the time, either by actions or by taking legal action, the worse it's gotten?
Well, ironically, in 1998, the Conservation Commission issued a permit for managing Long Beach?
Mm-hmm.
Which sort of unwittingly, some residents appealed, which opened it up for further review by DEP. DEP came back and said, "We don't actually think the Conservation Commission went far enough."
Right.
And then enacted things like the restriction around the 790 line. Can't drive around the point. Can't drive around the harbicide anymore. So, those, those sort of opportunities for additional agency review typically don't end up in favor of the community and increased access.
Sure.
It's almost always the opposite.
So, you're, you're trying to balance the, the requirements, the interests of the birds, as well as the continued access of the, of the residents and visitors?
I know it sounds a bit odd, but enforcing the regulations helps to perpetuate access.
Right.
However limited that access may be?
It's better than it would be otherwise.
It does perpetuate it into the future.
Right.
As opposed to not having any at all.
Right, which could be what could happen if people did, and if, and if your, your office and, and others in the town that are helping were not doing this to ensure our compliance.
Correct.
So, you're actually, even though it may be frustrating to some people, you're actually helping them in the long term, even if they don't realize.
Yeah, I can't imagine that many people perceive me as trying to perpetuate vehicle access on Long Beach, but that is, that is what we do almost, almost every day and every year.
Yes. Well, I certainly recognize that, and hopefully others will as well. I know it, it can look different from the outside when you want to do something and you can't, but they're able to do more than they would be otherwise if you weren't doing those things. So, I thank you for your, not, I would, I wouldn't even say it's thankless, because you're probably getting unpleasant trees directed your way, so it's even worse than thankless, but, but I thank you for what you've been doing.
Thank you.
Mr. Blitzer and Mr. Golden?
David, I get some questions pertaining to White Horse Beach. The plovers are now down there. There's going to be a lot of questions on, obviously, 3rd of July, as they've been doing that for 100 years down there, having the celebration. And I know there's a lot of bonfires that have recently have been permitted, and is that still going to happen this year, or is that not going to happen? What's your, what's your prediction? Because they're going to hatch, you, you have a hatch date when, don't you have a prediction on when they're going to hatch?
So, we can't predict the hatch date, but I do suspect that they're going to hatch prior to July 3rd, so there'll be chicks moving up and down the beach.
So, if they do?
It's my understanding that the bonfire permits have not been issued, and we actually met today after Department head meeting to talk about that situation. It is my understanding that those will not be issued because of these kind of restrictions that we have. And the other thing working against us is that evening, we have a 10.8-foot high tide at 10 o'clock at night, so a very high tide. And when you take that high tide and you take the restriction of where we have like the symbolic fence for that habitat, there's almost no room, and what that inevitably mean is that people will get pushed into the area where we can't allow them. So, it's kind of a, it really is a worst-case scenario there. So, it's my understanding those permits would not be issued for, for the bonfires.
So, are you putting a plan in place to handle that situation?
So, we met with the Police Department and Fire Department about that very issue, and we are working through that, and we're also working on getting some information out to the public explaining why the town has to do what it has to do.
So, I see the, the spots are where they were near the brook, and then you got another spot where the, looks like where the walkway is, where the ramp, the handicap mat, and then a little bit farther from that south. So, what about the area, let's say the full sail area? Is that, will that be restricted too? Is that, is that?
Yes. So, right now, this brood that's just right here?
Right.
Just north of Bartlett Brook?
Yeah.
There are no other broods on the beach, so they can go wherever they want, and just like they did last year, they are. The stream sort of acts as a, as a, as a southern barrier for them, but they go all the way down to Priscilla Beach depending upon the day, and that's why boat trailers have been blocked from the full sail. So, that has been blocked, same as it was last year. Restrictions in place for vehicles, for DPW, so they can't drive in that area to place an empty trash barrels, because that's not an essential function. Same with police and fire. If there's a case of emergency, they can drive through that area for obvious reasons. It's an emergency, but to just do routine patrols, they're, they're not allowed to drive through that area. So, those restrictions are all in place. The second nest, which is up here, is the one we're waiting to hatch, and that is obviously pretty, pretty much in the center of where the White Horse Beach activities do happen, right in front of the dunes there. So, that one is, the placement of that one is problematic for sure.
So, again, you're going to have to notify the residents that you're coming up with a plan to, so people understand what's going on. I mean, it, this could be a difficult situation down there. We almost had this situation last year, but it ended up working out.
Yep.
But, this year might be very difficult. I'm, I'm being nice, saying difficult, but.
Right. So, it's important that the town does as much as it can to let the state and federal agencies know what we're doing, so we've notified them about these nests, that we monitor every day, that the signage is up, that the symbolic fence is up, that we're having meetings like this. We're going to get the word out to the public. So, you know, if some unfortunate issue did happen, at least we can say to those agencies the town of Plymouth was doing everything it could to comply. The issue is when we, we don't do everything, and we don't meet the requirements, and we knew we should be meeting them, that's when the issues arise. That is sort of the history of Long Beach. We had been told repeatedly as a community, you need to, you need to comply with these regulations, and we didn't, and therefore?
Right, I get that.
We got draconian measures imposed upon us.
And while, while I'm still on that subject, in that area, the questions, already the questions are coming up about the, the trash barrels down there, and obviously, I, I told them that until a plover situation is, is, is fixed, until we can have vehicle access, they can have barrel, you can have barrels at the full sail like you've done?
Yeah.
But, at the end of Thomas, which is where they were questioning, will not be until the plover situation is corrected.
That's correct.
Is that accurate? And then, the last thing is the, I get, and you know, I believe you know about this. I think somebody from the town was down there, but there was some stormwater runoff right by the full sail, between the full sail and over towards the next house, right in front there, there was some, a stormwater, it was like, they said it was like a cesspool down there. And, and then it's all dried up, and it's like, it's, it's kind of like black in the sand, and is somebody, somebody went down and was testing the water. I'm not sure who it was. Was it somebody from your agency, or?
We didn't do any water testing, but we did show DPW that, that outfall and the condition of that and the location, because they asked us if we could identify that with them, and we did go down with them and take a look.
So, I was asked, and I'm going to ask you tonight, and I think the town manager might have already, has that been corrected, or about just having a machine go down there and just do something with the sand? It's all black sand, is what they told me. I, I haven't seen it.
So, right now, again, we wouldn't be allowed to bring machinery into that area? That would not be considered an essential?
Well, is there any, anything that can be done just to clean that up a little bit? It's kind of, they're, it, it doesn't look good, let's put it that way, and they're, they're worried about, because where the water came from, is it, is there bacteria? Is it polluted? I don't know what you can do to?
So, as I mentioned earlier?
To clean that area up?
That brood is going to be 25 days old on July 4th, so July 14th, there'll be 35 days, so anytime after that, we could bring equipment into that area, we would be able to.
So, hand equipment wouldn't do anything, wouldn't be able to?
Um, if, yeah, you could do it.
I, I haven't been down there.
If DPW chose to do that, for sure.
The, the president of the association called me on this and said if there's anything the town can do, because the town's aware of it, is what I was told, so.
Yeah, that would have to be a determination by DPW if they wanted to do that by hand. But as of July, then we can allow access to the ramp again and allow, you know, routine police patrols and their UTVs through that area again, so.
Okay.
That's what we're looking at, is like a mid-July date.
Okay, thank you, David.
Yeah, we can, I'll talk to the DPW director. I haven't seen the images myself, so I'm not sure the extent of the damage down there, but we'll talk to Mr. Coyle and see what can be done.
Mr. Golden? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. David, thank you for being here tonight. I think Mr. Blitzer hit on most everything that I wanted to ask of you. I'm, I live in Manomet, and July 3rd is like Christmas down there, so there are going to be a lot of folks who are upset by this news. So, you mentioned fireworks and bonfires. Are there any other enforcement issues that you see needing to be addressed for the July 4th holiday?
So, I think we have a pretty good handle on pedestrian access, walking through that area and the symbolic. I think we're in pretty good shape there. So, it's really the bonfires, the high tide squishing people into that area where they shouldn't be, the fireworks, of course, and then making sure that we don't have any vehicles driving through that area that aren't deemed essential.
Mm-hmm.
And I think we have a good handle on all those things. So, hopefully, what happens is those birds hatch out soon, which starts the date that they can fledge. And I completely understand, you know, it wouldn't be July 3rd, it wouldn't be July 4th. I totally understand that. Once those chicks fledge, if people want to have the bonfire permits issued, and they, you know, they want to go back out and have that event later on in summer, you see that in a lot of coastal communities now, that events that, that had fallen in the middle of the, the plover season sort of get pushed back to later summer, and the same could be had here. I totally understand that's probably not going to make anyone happy, but I guess it would be better than nothing, maybe.
Like, like Mr. Canty, I want to thank you for your hard work, and, and God bless you for all the calls that you're going to be getting.
Thank you.
I want to reiterate what Mr. Blitzer said. We really need to get communication out as soon as possible and as much as possible between now and the holiday.
Yeah, we felt like this was a, a good opportunity to start getting that word out as, as soon as possible, so.
Mr. Mahoney?
David, before we go to the plovers, Bartlett Brook, I could be wrong, but 2021 to 2020, the new bridge was put in with a culvert there, modern, replacing a century-old structure coming out of the pond underneath Taylor?
Yes, that was a Mastoff project.
Okay. So, I know prior to that, there were some Northeasters that were Okay, so I know prior to that, there were some nor'easters that would come in and drive sand up and, you know, jam up that waterway. Has that new infrastructure affected that in a positive way with respect to that, or we haven't had any storms to see how that worked out?
Uh, no, there's certainly been nor'easters that have pushed sediment all the way up Bartlett Brook, to upstream of that bridge. It's what we refer to as a low-core bridge, meaning it has a very low elevation, and it's difficult, if not impossible, to get, you know, like an excavator arm underneath that to fully get all that sediment out. You can do a pretty good job, and DPW does do a good job from the roadway down to the ocean, and, and when they get permission to work on the private property to get the upstream. And the reason we do that, the reason it does get dredged out is, of course, a restriction there raises the surface water elevation of Bartlett, and gets into people's basements and septics and all of that, so we need to lower that after a storm. But the bridge itself can be, can be a challenge for sure.
Okay. All right, so just back to the plover situation, I just-
Let me, if I could, just let me reiterate again, that was a, that was a Mastoff project, that wasn't, that wasn't the town of Plymouth installing that bridge, I just wanna be clear on that.
Why, you would've put, why, you would've put a different model in? No comment?
I, we did the bridge at Newfield Street at the very same time, and I think you can see some of the differences in approach, let me leave it at that.
Okay, so I'll take it to another level. If there's a critique there that a superior design would serve the community better, is that something where you provide that input to the state and they either don't listen, or you don't have the ability to submit that opinion at all?
So typically on Mastoff projects, they work through DPW, they, they really wouldn't seek my opinion on, on those issues.
Okay, all right, so we'll move on from that. So back, back to the birds. So having been around this for a while, I, I, the, the town needs to be able to say that we've done everything within our power to do, you know, everything that we could to, you know, avoid a, a negative incident or what have you. What do you call it, a catch? Is that the term?
A take.
A take down there. And just reiterating what we've heard from some of my colleagues, yeah, it's, it's communication, being out ahead of us as much as possible, as much as communication, and, you know, I'm, I'm comfortable that between you, DPW, and the town manager, you guys will be proactive in doing everything we can to make sure that there's a sort of balance as we move into the first and second week of July.
Okay, thank you, David, and I just have a few comments for you or Derek. In your meeting today, does public safety people think they're gonna be able to handle, let's keep it under control? Let me just ask the question.
Yeah, no, that's a great question, that, that came up a number of times in the conversation. So as Mr. Gu pointed out, the fire chief has agreed not to issue any permits for burning, so no bonfires. Part of the messaging that starts tonight, and we'll continue to work with the associations and the steering committees in that area to message that, there'll be no burning, though we will not allow any UTVs in the area, pedestrian, foot traffic only, to try to, you know, mitigate any risk to the birds. The public safety officials are concerned that, you know, if they had to respond, you know, what that would look like, especially not using UTVs. So we're gonna try to come up with a matrix of what would, what type of response would require the use of UTVs versus a call for service that may be not as emergent as it seems. So we gotta work through those, through those scenarios, and, and we'll have that in advance of July 3rd, to try to ensure that, you know, public safety is paramount, we know that, and we also know that we have to meet these guidelines set forth by state and federal regulators.
Yeah, because sometimes things get out of control, and that's what I'm, you know, I'll be point-blank with you, that's what I'm concerned with, especially when you mix alcohol with it-
That's right.
Or anything else. And then you mix half the move of half the country, calls for concern. So I don't know if you can use the god, or if that's been discussed, you don't have to put your plan out here, but, you know, take whatever measures you think are necessary to keep peace and order for everybody and safety, that's gonna be number one.
Agreed.
I know nobody likes to hear that, but it's gonna be paramount, and in the discussions that I'm sure they ask, well, that's why I'm not gonna air it here, but you have my full support for whatever you've come up with for a recommendation. But education also. My second comment is, can we gift any of these birds to other communities that don't, you know, might be lacking? You know how China gives the panda back, and Plymouth give some piping plovis, maybe Florida, New Jersey?
I think to Mr. Canty's point, you know, we had one last year, we have two this year. I think that's more of where the trend is going, unfortunately.
Yeah. All right, well, thank you, unless there's more questions or comments from the board. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Mr. Tavarez, Fourth July Committee, welcome. Mr. Metcalf?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the Select Board for having the July 4th Committee here. One last time, you won't have to see me anymore until the next one. You know, the, the, our annual celebration is getting ready to kick off in just slightly over two weeks at this point. But before I kind of, you know, typically at this meeting with you guys, we try and do a very quick over, as quick as possible overview of the events of the day. But before I get into the events of the day, I wanted to thank all of our commercial sponsors that have donated to July 4 Plymouth Inc. thus far, particularly the VSB, PGDC, the Town Manager's Office, and our Patriot sponsor, Tech Edge. I'd like to thank our 18 corporate sponsors, along with 17 individual citizen donations thus far. And I'm also happy to announce that we received donations as, as we walked in this evening, totaling $7,500 from some of our local restaurants, including Dylan's Local, Gillis Family Restaurant, Anna's Hibernide, Cavi Shack, Lobster Hut, East Bay Grill, and then we also received two considerable donations from residents for Stefani and Paresh Patel. With all of these combined contributions, we're on track to cover all of our expenses for the day's event. But as always, there's always still time to donate more, so you could, I encourage those at home to go to July 4 Plymouth, it's the number four, plymouth.com, and just click that donate button. Everything that, that we get in, we use, and we get ready to start doing the, it's the seed money for next year as well. So that being said, I'd like to kind of run through the day's events in chronological order. We're gonna be kicking off with the annual Independence 5K, which is along the waterfront, and speak more about that, I'm gonna turn it over to our committee member, Anne Marie Winchester, who is much more versed on the 5K situation than I am, so.
That's a little taller than I am. Good evening, thank you, everybody, for having us here tonight. So I am, well, they're up at Courteach Park getting the parade ready, I am the early morning shift down on the waterfront. Right around 6:00 AM, from Union Street to Brewster Street, right along water, will be completely shut down, and that road will stay closed through the conclusion of the fireworks. So that is where our, our day is gonna start. Around 6:30, that's when our food trucks and the, and Bergston Music, who handles all the sound for the Philharmonic, will be showing up at that time to get all their equipment set up. At the same time as that's happening, we'll be opening race day registration and bib pickup for the Ninth Annual Fourth of July 5K. We do have a new race course this year, so we'll be starting right at the waterfront, right by DCR Pilgrim Memorial State Park. The runners will go north on Water Street, take a left on Nelson, right on Court, right on Robbins Road, following the rail trail back through Nelson Park, left on Water Street, and the finish line will be, they'll be running right underneath the American flag that is over Water Street, so it'll be a really nice finish line for them this year. We do expect to have the same number of runners we've had the past nine years, so we are, we're looking at eight to, 800 to 1,000 runners will probably be, probably around 900 is what I'm guessing, based on what registration looks like right now. So, so we have that going on. As soon as the road race is over, right about 8:30, we'll start doing awards, we'll be doing that right from the reviewing stand for the parade, which will fill in some of that time that people are always looking for, to fill between, you know, getting themselves settled for their spot for the parade and the parade actually starting. So we will be doing awards right from there. And then a couple of things that I do wanna mention about the end of the parade, we will be, we, we usually have a, a situation where when people finish the parade, they stop right afterwards to unload their vehicles, which causes a huge traffic backup, it stops the parade completely. So last year, we put in place where the parade participants have to go down Water Street all the way to Memorial Drive and unload there, that worked really well last year, and it kept things moving smoothly, the flow went really well, we didn't have those backups, so we will be doing that again this year. And the other thing, and I, I have to, of course, I have to mention it for everybody that's listening, it is paid parking season, so while you're down there, please remember to pay, pay the parking meters, because holidays are not, are not exempt from paid parking. So I do like to remind people of that, because some people do, don't believe that the holidays, they don't have to pay for that. So that's all that's happening down at the waterfront, the food trucks will be there all day long, right through the end of the fireworks. Our food trucks are Mom on the Go and Alden Park, they're the same vendors that we've had every year. And then we will also have some roaming vendors as well, that will be selling balloons and popcorn, cotton candy, all of that fun stuff, and they will be there all day as well.
Okay, so up next will be our parade stepping off at 9 o'clock, it's themed, "You're a Grand Old Flag," it's gonna be stepping off from Courteach Park in North Plymouth. I'd like to remind everyone that there's still time to register as an entrant into the parade, we're always looking for groups. You can do that through our website, it's automatic, and then we'll get you into the parade lineup, which will go out approximately one week before July 4th. But to speak more about the logistics of the parade, I'd like to bring up Jeff Metcalf, who's been doing this for years, and he's gonna kind of go through the, the map and the route for you.
Thanks, Matt. Good evening, everyone, and thanks for having us once again this year. So you have in front of you a, the parade lineup map. As you can see, this is the, the site plan for Courteach Park, and I'd like to thank the Courteach Commerce Center for allowing us once again this year to be able to line up the parade here in the park, because it's a, it is, it makes life so much easier, because we've got a nice, long queue to bring people in and off of, off the street, but we also have a very large parking lot to divvy up the divisions 1, 2, and 3. But just to, to orient yourself, along the bottom of the, of the image there is Route 3A and Court Street, and just to the bottom left is actually the entry into Courteach. So any of the participants, when you're coming off of 3A, come into the entrance, but continue going straight, and you're gonna go kind of bend to your left and around what is Mill Number 1 there, that, that has the, the tower, that's the main building that you see from, from 3A, and the building to the right, Mill Number 3, is actually the gray building. So what you're doing is you're coming into the entrance, coming around Mill Number 1, and as you come around the back toward the top of the plan there, you see Building 11, 12, and what was the mill store at one point. But the, the participants will come to where it says the parade drop-off, the participants will continue straight and, and will be divvied up between Division 1, 2, and 3. If you're just dropping off your children, where it says drop-off, you come back to the building, go along the back of the building, and you can come right back out to, to 3A and take a right to Kingston. But I also wanna thank both the noontime Rotary Club and the breakfast Rotary Club, because once again this year, they're helping us to line up the parade. It's a, we start at 7 o'clock, and the parade, as Matt said, goes right off at 9. It's a little chaotic for a couple of hours, because, you know, what you'd really like to have happen is, number one, come first in Division 1, but that never happens, you, you know, they, they all come, when they come, and the, the Rotarians help to divvy, divvy them up. We, we kind of line up the parade in the different divisions, so the idea is just to try to get it as close as we can to what we have lined up ahead of time. So the Rotarians will help to divvy up Division 1, 2, and 3. The, the other thing, as they leave, Division 1 goes by the front of the, the gray brick building, and they kind of snake around back to the front entrance again, and what we generally do is we, we stop there right at 9 o'clock, because there is a whole group of regional fire engines that line up in the parking lot north of here. So they come down right at like 10 of 9, and as soon as they, they get there, they head the parade off at 9 o'clock, and, and you'll, you'll hear them coming. And, and then we follow with the parade right after that. So should be, should be a good day, we're looking forward to it, and we, we, we hope it's, you know, a, a nice day, like it, hopefully it's not as hot as it is, but, but we'll, we'll just see what happens. Do you want me to mention the fireworks as well at this time?
Oh, no.
Okay, all right, but thank you for, for having us, and hope it's a good day.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeff. And of course, I wanna invite you all to participate, as we always do each year, to march in the parade in the front there, where our town of Plymouth banner is. If you'd like to do that, just, just be there, you know, a little after 8 would be good. That includes you, Derek, as the town manager, or the assistant town manager, whoever you deem fit to, to, to take on the challenge. Can be a hot day, as you know, sometimes, so.
I'm ready for it.
One thing I'd like to mention is, we've worked closely this year with the local scene, formerly PACT TV, they're gonna be providing live coverage, as they always have, of the parade. We are working to mic it up so that people at home can hear what we're, what we're discussing from the reviewing stand and announcing the groups, so they know what's going by them. And they wanted me to mention that their parade coverage will begin at approximately 10:00 AM, when the parade arrives at the grandstand on the waterfront, could be a little earlier than that, I doubt it. The parade can be seen live on Comcast Channel 6, Verizon Channel 43, as well on the Local Scene's Community Member Producers YouTube channel, which can be found at the Local Scene Community Producers on YouTube. Anne Marie did mention the food trucks, they'll be there all day, right up and, right up through the fireworks, as well as we'll have novelty items available throughout the day and evening from our exclusive roaming vendors. These are vendors that have paid for the right, for the day to distribute their wares along the waterfront, and I thank you guys for issuing us the exclusive vending permit. Next would be the Plymouth Philharmonic will once again be performing a live patriotic concert just before the fireworks at the waterfront DCR Park. The concert begins at 7:30, and the local scene will also be covering this concert, concert for those viewers at home. If there is inclement weather, the Phil will perform, they've notified us that they will perform the next evening, evening, July 5th, due to the large staging that they have to have, and so they, they can keep it there for two days. And then, as, as that concert concludes, it goes right into the fireworks display, which will begin approximately 9, 9:15 PM over Plymouth Harbor. I'd like all those watching to be aware that if we, as we've discussed at the last meeting, if we do need to postpone, we will, the fireworks, or we will make that decision prior to 7:00 PM on July 3rd, and we will post this notification via all our social media accounts, and in hopes that also other people will share that posting, we can get out to as many people as possible. It's really the easiest way for us to, to handle a release like that. While there is no rain date for the parade, again, we do have that rain date for the fireworks for Saturday, July 13th. So not the, the immediate Saturday after, but the one after that. I'd like to, in conclusion, thank the community for their stepping up to donate, for their participation. We look forward to a safe, happy, fun-filled holiday, patriotic holiday, celebrating all of us here in the United States, in America's hometown, and I'd like to- And I'd like to especially thank the members of the July Four Plymouth Inc. Committee. Um, without their tireless work, um, I don't know how this would get done. So, I'd like to thank Anne Marie Winchester, Jeff Metcalf, Mark Wells, Jad Osmansky, and Ken Tavaris for all their hard work, and we'll see you all on the Fourth.
Comments from the board, Mr. Golden, then Mr. Blitzer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Matt, uh, thank you for bringing this update to us tonight. Uh, I don't really have any questions, but I want to say thank you to you and your committee. Uh, this is no small lift, and, uh, I will say a prayer for perfect weather.
Yes, uh, we all, I start, start watching that now, so. And it's completely unpredictable, so thank you. Uh, it is an entire committee that puts this together, so thank you.
All right, Matt, uh, Matt, Jeff, it's Anne Marie, excuse me. I want to thank you folks and all the volunteers that work with you. Running one event is so hard to, to, you're running multiple events and you're running it with private donations that you have to go out and get. It's not an easy feat to do that. Uh, you know, this is not a taxpayer-funded event. This is all private donations and, uh, I welcome anybody out there that, uh, would like to donate, when you see that can going down, you know, down the parade, you know, throw a couple of bucks and throw up coins, some dollars in there, whatever you can, because this is a great event and, uh, and it's, and it's a free event.
And to that point, we have a, a new feature this year in the parade, so be on the lookout for it, is large signs with a QR code. So, if you scan that with your phone, it's going to bring you right to that donate button.
It's a free family event.
Yeah.
And you guys are the ones that put this on, and I, I can't thank you enough, believe me.
Thank you.
I'm going to echo the rest of the board and thank you and your committee as I do every year, Matt. Um, job well done, and, um, we have a check for you for $1,255.
Oh, wow.
And the reason I bring that up is not because it's not about me. It's about the residents in this community that came forward and to support your cause, and that's, that's what it's about.
I appreciate that. Thank you to Quintle Brothers for this, for this donation.
No, that's Squinny's, and that was, that was actually the residents that actually came forward.
That's a lot of pizza.
And, yeah. And, you know, I'm, the reason I bring it up is so the supporters see that we're, we're supporting the causes that we told them we're going to.
There are many ways to donate, so I thank you for spearheading that.
And I was on your website today, and, um, we're going to fill out the forms tomorrow, but I was waiting for an okay. As you know, Plymouth North, uh, won the championship, um, Father's Day.
Yes.
And, um, we're going to sponsor a float for the, for the team and, um, fill it out. You give them a good spot, I know you will.
We'll, 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 we'll make them a highlight for sure. They deserve it.
Yes, they do.
Well-played game, uh, they won convincingly there by the, by the end, and, uh, you know, I, I know all those boys are really happy right now and they should continue that on. They should ride that high for as long as they can.
Yeah, yeah. So, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Anything we can do, uh, I can do. Don't be afraid to call.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Anyone wishing to speak under public comment? Someone online? Town managers report?
Okay, good evening. Uh, just a few updates. Um, as you all can recall, a town meeting approved the acquisition of Twenty-Two Maryville Lane in April. Um, we are moving quickly towards a PNS. Uh, there was a walkthrough that was conducted this afternoon, the, the DPW director there and others. Um, so we are expecting, if all goes well, to have the purchase and sale agreement in front of this board, um, either June 25th, or if not that soon, then certainly by July 9th. So, um, moving quickly on acquiring that property. Um, it's, we are finally at the end with, um, Station Two over in West Plymouth. Um, the final walkthrough has been completed. The punchless items have been, um, corrected. Uh, landscaping and final paving have been complete over at Station Two. Uh, we will be planning a ribbon-cutting ceremony, probably, I would say, sometime in late July, uh, once the landscape, um, takes hold. So, again, uh, planning on opening that station. Things are moving along very well at the manement station as well. Uh, we're hoping, um, by September, October time period, that project will be complete as well. Um, since we're talking about fire and emergency management, as you all know, we, um, will be experiencing three days of, uh, extreme heat. Um, we have not triggered the, uh, heat emergency metric. Um, so at this time, emergency management, along with the fire chief, will continue to monitor, um, the heat. Tomorrow, the town, for all the town, uh, facilities will be closed because of the Juneteenth holiday. Uh, emergency management will be working. If we need to, we are prepared to open up cooling shelters, um, tomorrow, uh, if we need to. Uh, we do know the buildings will be operational on Thursday, so we would direct folks who want to seek shelter in a cooling location to the Cal and/or the library come Thursday or Friday. Uh, by Friday afternoon, we certainly will be out of this heat wave. So, again, first responders are watching, um, the next three days of heat and, uh, certainly will be reaching out to other organizations, um, that focus their services on high-risk populations like homeless population and like the senior population. So, we're trying to, uh, ensure that we have, um, uh, communications with those agencies. Um, Stevens Field, I had the opportunity, um, to tour Stevens Field, uh, this assistant town manager myself did, um, yeah, last week with, um, Mr. Gould. Uh, we are still planning, now we're, um, planning on a, uh, the third week of July to open Stevens Field, do a soft opening. We'll do a ribbon-cutting, uh, ceremony thereafter, but if you have, hadn't had the chance to go by there, they're moving very quickly. They've, the parking lot is nearly complete, uh, the overlook is co- is nearly complete as well. Um, and, um, they, when we were there last week, they were just finishing the concession, um, um, bathhouse as well, too. So, uh, the next, um, project to be completed over there will be, um, the boat ramp and to finish up the basketball court and the, uh, and the baseball field. So, again, uh, looking for probably three, four more weeks before that project is fully complete. Uh, moving on, so as you may have heard, uh, the hump whales are back. Um, Mr. Hunter, our Harrah Massa, held a meeting today, um, with a NOAA in the Whale and Dolphin Conservatory, um, so that they can strategize on how to work with boaters in the community this time around if the whales, uh, get too close to our shores like, uh, they were in 2022. So, um, there will be public messaging, uh, that will go out, um, there'll be handouts that will take place over at all the different boat ramps, um, and then on social media, uh, just educating folks on, uh, not to get too close to the whales, um, because that can injure the animal, as you can imagine. Uh, so we'll continue to monitor the whale issue. Um, I guess there are bait fish that are swimming close to the shore, so, um, we are expecting that we're going to see the whales get close to the shore like they did in 22. Uh, moving to planning, so just as a reminder, I think I mentioned this last week, the master plan kickoff meeting will take place this Thursday at South Middle School at six PM. So, again, uh, this is going to kick off, uh, I would say at least an eighteen-month period of master planning that's going to be led by our planning board and our planning director, Mr. Lee Hartman. So, again, South Middle School at six PM. Uh, and the last announcement I want to make this evening is that I, I had mentioned, um, a week ago that we had an extremely successful, um, kickoff event for the ARISE program. So, that is the Addiction Response and Improvement Strategies effort. Um, that's being led by Commissioner Braddy and her team over at the Health and Human Services Department. Uh, that is a program that issued $250,000 worth of opioid prevention and treatment grant monies to five different organizations here in Plymouth. Um, I bring this up because I mentioned that Channel Five will be doing a cover story, um, on this program specifically in Plymouth. So, that cover story will air tomorrow on Channel Five at six PM. So, again, those that are interested in learning more about, uh, what our community is doing to prevent fatal and non-fatal overdoses, I would ask you to tune into Channel Five at six PM, uh, tomorrow evening. Pending any questions, that's all I have for this evening.
Mr. Blitzer?
Hey, Derek, I just have a quick question on Stevens Field. I was down there the other day looking at it. It looks beautiful, and one of the neighbors who's right at the end of the road, he, his house faces Stevens Field, and he had a question for me that hopefully you might be able to answer. He wanted to know, will that be gated at night? Will that be locked up at night like we do for, at Forgers Field, for instance? I think, does Nelson get locked, closed?
Uh, they, Nelson does not get gated, and I don't believe there are any plans to close Stevens Field at night.
Because I know Forgers Field gets locked.
Right.
At certain times.
It is, yeah, but not, not, I don't even believe there are gates even in the, the design of that field.
That was the first question. Second question was the lights. Will the lights be left on or will they be shut off?
So, those will be on, those will be on timers, the lights, um, those lights, uh, we are converting to LED lights. Um, so, not that it's going to matter much, but yeah, those will be on timers. So, they'll shut off at a specific time every evening.
I have no idea, what time?
I can find out.
Okay. So, uh, if you can let me know, I'll let him know. Thank you very much.
Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Derek, thanks for the update. Um, you mentioned, uh, the manement station will be completed in September, October, approximately?
Yes.
Uh, do, do you anticipate that, uh, there'll be able to be a tree lighting ceremony and event there that following December?
Um, I have not heard any conversations about a tree lighting event there.
Okay.
But certainly we can follow up and have those conversations.
Thank you.
Derek, um, in your report, uh, would you like to touch on the, um, an update on DPW on the 5th of July or, um?
Uh, yeah, I'm happy to, well, I, I guess I defer to you, Mr. Chairman. Um, all the departments are certainly willing and able to, um, take the July 5th holiday off if, um, if the board is willing to grant them that day. Uh, we do know that, um, it's going to be a long weekend and, um, the DPW has already been giving that day off. So, I can say that, um, and the chairman started these conversations on Memorial Day when he brought to my attention a number of people that had called him and really talked about how great our cemeteries looked, um, this past Memorial Day. And then on the course of the next couple of weeks, I had from other board members, folks calling me and saying how great downtown looked, and so it was, yeah, oftentimes the DPW folks, they often get overlooked, you know, they are the men and women that when we're sleeping and, you know, on a cold January night, um, they're out there plowing and keeping our roads, um, opened. Um, and then the summer, when it's oppressive heat, they're waking up at four AM to start their day early to, to work in the heat. Um, and so, um, we had granted them the July 5th holiday off because of their efforts, and we wanted to recognize them for, for everything that they have done over the course of the years, and, and oftentimes, again, they get overlooked. Um, they don't have blue lights and red lights like fire and police do, so we wanted to recognize, um, the public works employees for all their efforts.
And then in the conversation out of that, I brought up, um, closing Town Hall in, uh, Cal and the libraries, um, where it's, we're only open on that Friday, um, several hours anyway. So, if the board has no objections, um, Derek, you checked with the department heads and everybody's good with that?
Um, I did speak to them all after our conversation, Mr. Chairman, and they all can handle the operations of things that they would typically do on a Friday. They can certainly take care of them on the Wednesday prior to the holiday.
Okay, unless the board has no objections, uh, comments for that? Give it a nod?
Mr. Chairman, a nod or you're looking for a motion on that?
No, I don't think we need a motion. Just, we just wanted to bring it to the board's attention that we had a conversation and, um, we wanted to check with department heads afterwards because Derek was going down the road with the DPW and I thought, what about Town Hall? And, um, I don't see people running in here to pay their bills on July 5th. Yeah, when the, and we're only open half a day, and if somebody does have to pay a bill, they can always leave it in the lockbox, so.
That's right.
Um, I, I think it's a good way to show appreciation where we can, and, um, it's not going to break the bank. But I, I do have to say, and I know you brought up the red and blue lights, because those, um, men and women are out there all day long working, and, uh, some of it's mandatory and double shift. So, I would just like to leave with a note that maybe we talk to the chiefs and see if there isn't a little something we can do for them.
Sure.
After the, the Fourth and the Fifth. I'm to show our appreciation to them. I don't know what that might be, but I'm definitely open to it, and I'm sure the board is, so.
Well, I can, I will, um, extend, um, our gratitude to, um, to all the employees because they would really appreciate, um, what would amount to as a four-day mini, uh, vacation by having the July 5th off. So, um, I thank the board for your support in recognizing the five hundred-plus employees that we have. Um, I don't think they've ever had an extra day off, um, at least in my knowledge, so this will be a first. Um, but I think just the way the holiday falls, I think this makes a lot of sense. So, uh, thank you, um, for supporting the employees for all that they, that they do.
Yeah, it, it falls on the Friday. That's a factor. It also, it's a, it's a short day here.
Right.
And, um, it's the right thing to do. So, thank you all for that. And we're going, you all set now, Derek, right? You finished?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, select board, open discussion, new business? Mr. Blitzer?
Just real quick, I, I just want to, uh, make a suggestion to, uh, we have all these events on public part, property and, uh, I'm not saying it should be mandatory, but I'm, I think all Plymouth events on, on Plymouth property should use Plymouth vendors if possible. You know, we had an event, uh, coming up on June 30th. It's an out-of-town vendor, and I know in Plymouth, we have at least seven breweries now in town, and we have multiple food trucks as a, several restaurants that I know that have food trucks in Plymouth. And I'd just like to see if we're going to use Plymouth property, I'd like to see the Plymouth vendors, uh, be considered. Uh, that's who they hire for these events. Thank you.
Uh, if I could, so, a lot of the events that take place, uh, put together by nonprofit organizations typically, like the Chamber of Commerce, for example, and, you know, they'll go ahead and hire their own, their own vendors, as you can imagine. Um, I can tell you, though, when the town puts out, um, RFPs for vendors, like a concession stand or something, we certainly can make it a preference that it, that those vendors are.
I would, I would like to do that and, uh, you know, I mean, I think, uh, most of the, these events, you know, we get, you know, hopefully we're going to get that DCR, uh, Memorial Park, and we're going to control all those events. And I would just like to see, uh, just Plymouth vendors being used. Uh, we have one at Nelson Park, we do events at Nelson Park. I think it should be Plymouth vendors. So, uh, that's a suggestion I'd like to, you know, or encourage, maybe encourage is a better word, uh, these vendors. So, a lot of some of these vendors are getting free parking. You know, we'll get, we're, we're good to some of these, uh, these events. So, let's, uh, support the, the, uh, the businesses in Plymouth. That's all. Thank you.
Mr. Canty?
So, I, I think if it's, if it's a nonprofit, it's a different scenario from what, um, Mr. Blitzer's talking about, because they're putting on the event, they can solicit who they want to participate in that event. I think that's fair. I think if the town is doing it, the town, you know, we could certainly make sure that local, local vendors are aware of it, but I, I think having a preference may be, a preference for local may be sort of, uh, short-sighted in the sense that some of our vendors are going to want to put on events in other communities, in your Kingston's, your Duxbury's, your Hingham's, um, down in the Cape, um, you know, south coast area. And I, I just think in the long term, yeah, we have a lot of desirable places where a lot of these events can happen, but a lot of these businesses, they're using, if, if they go to another place, they're trying to bring you to their place in their community. Whereas, you know, somebody like, uh, like a, a Mayflower or a Vitamin C or an Untold may have less of an inclination to put an event on in Nelson because they're already getting enough local business. They might want to go somewhere else, you know, for that type of thing. So, I think making them aware of it so that locals that want to participate, that's, that's fine, but if we did have a preference that may encourage other communities to lock out our vendors from those communities, and in the long term, our vendors would be losing more opportunities than they would gain. So, I would just think of the net, potential negative externalities of that.
Mr. Chairman, I, so maybe I'll change the word to encourage. I didn't say mandatory, and I, and that's why I wouldn't make it mandatory, but I just would like to encourage using local business. That's all, so. like to encourage using local business, that's all, so.
Thank you. Anybody have anything under letters? Old Business? Mr. Mahoney?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, again, just coming back to the state championship game, the Plymouth North baseball team. I, I had a family function on Sunday afternoon, I couldn't get out to Worcester for the game and I really wanted to be there, but my son and the town manager was sending us, myself, updates repeatedly and again, I wanted to congratulate Mr. Falet, I believe, in his 34th year over there. You know, I wouldn't want anyone else, my son was on the baseball team coaching my son, high school baseball, than Dwayne Falet, you know, the team overall, but especially their leader and the starting pitcher from Sunday was Mr. David Brown and just a superlative young man. And apparently the New England Baseball Journal has named him the 2024 MIAA Player of the Year, so I just wanted to congratulate him on that.
Any other comments from the board? I echo with him, with Mr. Mahoney and I'd like to extend an invitation out to the team and Coach Falet, if they'd like to come and join us at one of our future meetings, they're welcomed and we'll have some pizza and soda, that's what we've done in the past, we did, well, we did it in 2008, I don't know about 2011. See, John, I told you I had the 2008 book, you know, back and I dug it out, so. I would have been there also.
You've got your shirt on too.
Yeah, I, I would have been there also, but one of my employees is a player on the team and the other one helps out Coach Falet, so we were really shorthanded and, and it broke my heart not to, to join in on that, but that's okay, you know. And I do have their shirt on that they gave me. This actual team also did the polar plunge and that's how I, I met a lot of them and that's how I got the shirt back from that. I made a pledge to the Jordan and, on their behalf, because I thought it was great to see the students actually, you know, it was amazing to see them all there, the whole, most of the team was there, so.
We, we just have to make sure that if they come in, we do all get state title championship shirts, okay?
Well, I, I hope so. Well, I, I can put it in through Andrew. I'll start, I think he's on Thursday night, isn't he, Everett? We'll start working him through, to the coach, Coach Falet. So that's a little story there and that's fantastic for the, for the community, so I hope that they accept and come in and do like we do it, say a few things and maybe do a little, couple screenshots here and there of the game, you know?
Typically like, I don't know, but, you know, the certificate, there's a, whatever, there you go, I'm glad he's here. A proclamation and we read those things and they all get.
Yes, yeah, that would be awesome. Yep, we'll work on that. Okay, anything else under Old Business? Okay, well, before we adjourn, the next meeting is June 25th. And a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn, having concluded our business.
Second?
Second, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you for watching, we'll see you next week.